United Methodist Church on Wilshire Boulevard, where he also voted for his replacement. After voting, the mayor talked to reporters about how he's leaving the city he's governed for eight years.
I'm very proud that the city's in better shape than it was eight years ago. We've gone through the worst financial crisis since the 1930s, but we've also weathered that crisis and I couldn't be prouder to hand over the baton with the city in much better shape.
And once election results were in, the mayor's office released a statement congratulating incoming Mayor Garcetti for his victory while also thanking City Controller Grul for her commitment to the people of Los Angeles, calling her a dedicated public servant. And in other election results, Rasha Goel tells us who won seats in the L.A. City Council as well as who will fill the city attorney and city controller seats.
In the L.A. City Attorney's race, incumbent L.A. City Attorney Carmen Trutanich was defeated in his bid for reelection by former California Assemblyman Mike Fuhr, who won 62 percent of the votes. In the city controller race, Ron Galperin, an attorney, declared victory over L.A. City Councilman Dennis Zine. Galperin won 56 percent of the votes. As for the council races, replacing outgoing City Councilman Ed Reyes in the first district is former state legislator Gilbert Sadio, who beat Jose Guardia. Reyes is chief of staff with nearly 53 percent of the votes. In Council District Nine, State Senator Corinne Price led with nearly 53 percent of the votes, beating former aide to Councilman Jose Huizar Anna Cubas. In the 13th district, which encompasses Hollywood, Echo Park, and Silver Lake, Mitch O'Farrell, chief of staff for Councilman, now mayor-elect Eric Garcetti, beat out challenger former Public Works Commissioner John Choi with 53 percent of the votes. As for the Council District Six seat, which was vacated when former Councilman Tony Cardenas was elected to Congress in the fall, a special election was also held. Cindy Montañez, formerly in the State Assembly, and school board member Nury Martinez, who won the top two votes in a field of six candidates, will face off in a runoff election on July 23rd. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
As for the council races in District Three, Five, Seven, Eleven, and Fifteen, there were clear victories back in the March election, making a runoff this May unnecessary. Voters were also asked to cast their ballot to determine the fate of the city's marijuana dispensaries. Yana K. reports on the results of the controversial issue.
Los Angeles city residents were not only voting for a new mayor and new city officials, but they were also asked to cast their vote on three separate measures concerning medical marijuana dispensaries. Currently, there are over 1,000 pot shops operating in the city of Los Angeles. Measure D limits medical marijuana dispensaries to 135, the number that was approved before a 2007 moratorium imposed by the city. The measure also increases taxes paid to $60 for every $1,000 in sales. Opposing Measure F did not put a cap on the number of dispensaries and called for a 20% sales tax and audits and background checks of employees. Measure E is similar to Measure D, limiting the total number of dispensaries without imposing higher taxes. Measure D, which caps the number of dispensaries to 135, received 63 percent of the votes. The measure increases taxes on sales, regulates hours of operation, and sets rules on where dispensaries can be located. Voters we spoke with said their main concern is better industry regulation.
You should be able to go in and buy marijuana cigarettes the way, you know, Camel or Marlboro, whatever you want, and you should be able to just choose a pack like you do anything else.
I think as long as the city regulates it, then I'm fine with it.
When asked at the polls, Mayor Antonio Villaregosa expressed similar sentiment.
I think most people in California want medical marijuana for people who need it, who are sick. They don't want a proliferation of marijuana outlets, and so, you know, trying to figure out that balance is what I think the people of this town will try to do on this election.
Regulating medical marijuana dispensaries had proven a challenge for the city in the past. The hope is approval of Measure D is a step in the right direction. As for dispensaries that are not eligible to remain in business under the newly approved measure, those will receive a letter from the city. I'm Yana K. for L.A. this week.
The new law goes into effect shortly after election results are certified. Officials have until June 11th to certify all the votes. For a full list of election results, go to our Facebook page at facebook.com/LAthisweek. Turning to another big story for our city, a judge has dismissed the federal consent decree governing the LAPD that was triggered by scandal involving abusive officers. Gil Reyes reports on the history of the decree and how it's changed policing in Los Angeles.
It's finally over. More than a decade of federal oversight officially ends for the Los Angeles Police Department. Chief Charlie Beck says government supervision, though unpopular among his staff, improved his agency.
We've become accountable, we've become transparent, and we've become more effective than we've ever been.
The U.S. Justice Department issued the consent decree in 2001, following the LAPD Rampart scandal. That case found LAPD gang unit officers involved in evidence tampering, perjury, also the beating and framing of suspects. The decree ordered over 100 reforms, including improvements in tracking officer misconduct and better training of cadets.
In these last 12 years, the Los Angeles Police Department did not just comply with the consent decree, they took it to heart. They used it as a guide to change their culture.
The plan was expected to expire in 2006, but a federal judge extended the order citing incompletion of the reforms. He also approved a plan to transfer monitoring duties to the L.A. Police Commission, a local agency. This May, the judge's signature dismissed that last remaining order, freeing the LAPD of oversight for the first time in 12 years.
There's lots more to do, we know that, but it should be done by the department through the leadership of this chief, through the leadership of the command staff.
Since the decree, it's also a more racially diverse group than before, which stresses community policing over use of force. Mandates in the decree that changed the department for the better. For L.A. this week, I'm Gil Reyes.
And one day after the consent decree announcement, the mayor attended the LAPD graduation ceremony, where he touched upon the lifting of the consent decree as well as other achievements within the department during his tenure as mayor. Rasha Goel reports.
It's not just the new recruits who are marking a milestone today at their graduation ceremony at the Los Angeles Police Academy in Alleejen Park. So is Mayor Antonio Villaregosa.
This will be my last graduation ceremony as your mayor, and I will miss these men and women in blue.
This new diverse class of 39 cadets is composed of 10 Caucasian, 24 Hispanic, three Korean, and two African-American graduating officers.
Everything you do has to be about building the trust and cooperation of community.
When the mayor took office in 2005, one of his goals was to grow the LAPD to over 10,000 officers, a vision that has become a reality. In fact, in these past eight years, the Los Angeles Police Department has hired nearly 4,100 officers from 79 recruit classes.
10,000 police officers is not just a number. It was a promise. I promised Angelinos that when it came to ensuring their basic safety and peace of mind, we were going to set the bar high, and we were going to reach it.
And another historic accomplishment for the LAPD, the recent dismissal of the federal consent decree that had governed the LAPD in the aftermath of scandal within the department.
And now, you are a national model for how the command staff, the community, and the cops on the street can work together to turn a department around.
For these new officers, being part of the LAPD is a point of pride.
I feel amazing, it's the best feeling I've ever had.
The mayor also commended LAPD officers for their work in making public safety a top priority. According to reports, since the mayor first took office, violent crime and homicides have gone down 49 percent, and property crime, 30 percent. From the LAPD headquarters, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Officials say the city's crime rates have dropped to their lowest levels since the 1950s. Young people across the state recently marked Kids Ocean Day by picking up trash along the coastline. Anita Bennett reports from Dockweiler State Beach, where students collected about 900 pounds of debris. As waves rolled onto the sand, students, teachers, and volunteers spread out across the beach to scoop up trash.
If we pick up trash, the birds won't eat it, and they won't die, they'll pass on.
In all, 3,500 people from across L.A. County took part in the 20th Annual Kids Ocean Day at Dockweiler State Beach.
Kids Ocean Day is about educating kids to be aware of the damage we humans are doing to the ocean.
Sponsored by the Los Angeles County Public Works Department, environmental groups, and the city of L.A., the Adopt a Beach cleanup was a way for kids to make a difference while having fun. Several parents even got in on the action.
We're finding things like styrofoam and cigarette buds, and just junk and cans and things that people leave behind.
City Councilman Bill Rosendahl also stopped by to offer the students a little support.
You've got kids here who are experiencing Mother Nature at its finest.
And all the kids seem to be having a really good time. What did you find?
There's paper and like things of chocolate and different cups.
Organizers say each student and volunteer collects about a quarter pound of debris, and with 3,500 people out here, well, that's a lot of trash. At Dockweiler State Beach, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week. And at the end of the day, the over 3,000 students formed artwork that could be seen from the sky by joining hands on the sand to depict a boy holding a seashell and saying, "Listen." And Anita Bennett continues with another report on how our city is committed to the environment, this time through the use of high-tech solar trash cans. This busy neighborhood at the corner of Seventh and Alvarado Streets is one of the most densely populated parts of the city. Residents is also one of the dirtiest.
Sometimes I come through, you know, go to McDonald's at night, people will dump out the trash cans and pillage stores just to see what they can find, so it's normally a pretty trashy area.
But that could soon change, now that five new high-tech trash cans are being installed in the area, including in front of the MacArthur Park metro stop.
A couple go here on Sixth Street and on Eighth Street, so we're hitting all the hotspots where we have a lot of trash receptacle pickup and a lot of debris on the ground.
Councilman Ed Reyes joined residents and reps from Big Belly Solar. That's the East Coast company that makes the machines, and they all showed them off.
It compacts, so it's going to get five times the quantity that you'd get in a traditional trash can.
The solar-powered bins crush garbage down so they hold more inside, then they send digital signals to let sanitation workers know when they're full. That in turn reduces overflow in the amount of trash on the streets. Local business owners say garbage has been a big problem in this neighborhood for years, but they hope this new trash can will help.
It's important to me, being in the restaurant business, that the streets must be clean, the sidewalks must be clean, otherwise my customers lose their appetite.
The units are not cheap, at about $5,000 each, but they're expected to reduce trash pickups from five days a week to just a couple of times a month, and over the long haul, that should save the city a lot of green. In MacArthur Park, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week. Big Belly Solar bins are already being used in Santa Monica, Philadelphia, Boston, and several other cities. Hard work and persistence pay off for a group of young students. Rasha Goel introduces us to some young people who may have had a rough past but who are now looking toward a bright future.
Using drugs led me to selling them, then making money became my addiction, so I started burglarizing homes and robbing people. At 17, I was convicted of armed robbery.
After three years in a juvenile facility, Ramon Leha's life has been transformed, thanks to the L.A. Conservation Corps. The nonprofit organization recently acknowledged their members' successes with a celebratory luncheon.
Every year for the last 22 years, not quite this big, we recognize and honor over nearly 200 scholars that are Corps members and former graduates that are receiving scholarships to continue their education and post-secondary success.
The Conservation Corps helps at-risk youth between the ages of 14 to 24 by providing them with skills, education, and work experience in conservation and service projects.
They fix parks, they get rid of graffiti, they work in the ocean types of studies. We have three charter schools that we run.
133 students received a scholarship from the L.A. Conservation Corps and will be continuing on to a community college or four-year university. For many of these students, the L.A. Conservation Corps has given them hope for a brighter future and provided them with the tools to achieve their dreams.
It feels good, like that they're actually helping me with my education, you know. I never wanted money to be a barrier in between me and my education.
I plan to study business, and my main focus was to open a nonprofit organization just like this one as a so, so I can help the at-risk youth, because I once was at-risk youth.
This year, FedEx, and Martha and Ari Swiller were recognized for raising funds to support the organization. L.A. City Councilman Ed Reyes showed his support for the kids.
Many of the kids come from single-parent households, many of the kids come from households where the parents are becoming familiar with the culture and don't understand the track towards education, and so, building up their confidence, building up their education skills, and building up their identity as contributors to our great society is so invaluable.
One change today, making a difference in many lives for tomorrow. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
The L.A. Conservation Corps was founded in 1986 and has become a leader in workforce development and alternative education for inner-city youth and young adults. And a member of the L.A. Conservation Corps was among those honored this year during the city's Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Rich Samuels takes us to the City Hall for the annual celebration of diversity and service to the community.
The mayor and L.A. City Council members helped kick off Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month recently at a special ceremony inside and outside City Hall.
This history is the history of triumph, the triumph of openness and opportunity over bigotry and bias.
Those singled out for special recognition included Bruce Sato, recipient of the Spirit of Los Angeles Award, and executive director of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps.
My spirit is genuine and true because of all of you, and also because of my small family that is here.
Entrepreneurial chef Jethiela received the Dream of Los Angeles Award.
So it's not about me, it's about all of us, and I'm absolutely proud to stand in front of you in this city that created me and that I love so much.
KSCI TV, Channel 18, L.A.'s number-one Asian-language TV station, received the Hope of Los Angeles Award for its service to the community.
We understand the duty and honor that we accept, and we are committed to use that to change the lives of people in the Asian community.
The celebration marked just the beginning of a month-long celebration of art, music, and creative workshops throughout the city. I'm Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month events are coordinated by the city's Department of Cultural Affairs. The city council recognizes officers who make up the LAPD Human Trafficking Unit, seniors fighting back against scammers, and a new horse-friendly park in the valley. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilmember Bernard Parks recognized members of the LAPD Human Trafficking Unit. Between January of 2012 to April of this year, the LAPD unit conducted 94 investigations, identified and rescued 67 females, 39 under the age of 18, and made 52 human trafficking-related arrests.
The average age of which minors are involved or enticed or forced into this commercial sex trade is 13 years of age.
The LAPD partners with non-governmental organizations in conducting investigations and providing housing and psychological care for survivors. As part of the city's Recognition of Senior Fraud Awareness Day this month, Councilman Dennis Zine joins senior citizens at Felicia Mayhood Multipurpose Senior Center to help bring awareness to scams against seniors. The seniors there staged a 60-style Stop Senior Fraud protest and acted out scenarios recreating current senior scams. City leaders hope by exposing scams that often take advantage of a senior's compassion and trusting nature, they make it harder for scammers to succeed. The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Mitchell Englander and the Bureau of Engineering, recently opened the new Aliso Canyon Park in Porter Ranch. The park features the first public equestrian arena in the northwest San Fernando Valley. Amenities include a trailer parking and staging area, an automatic horse waterer, and cross ties. The park is not just for horse owners. Improvements also include walking paths, meadow areas, and new picnic tables.
I see people reading, relaxing, I've seen people having picnics out here, it's beautiful. It's a nice change for the area.
Bike racks, security solar lighting, and native landscaping make the park a welcoming place for the community. On behalf of Councilmember Jan Perry, Councilmember Jose Huizar recently helped honor some of the city's crossing guards.
I get a good feeling knowing that somebody is out there taking the time to make sure that our kids are arriving safely as they go to and from school.
The crossing guard program is overseen by the city's Department of Transportation. Approximately 400 men and women serve as the city's crossing guards at elementary schools across the city. We just told you about the new equestrian park in the valley, and in South L.A., residents are also celebrating the opening of a new park that's got both kids and parents excited. Ana Marcos has more on the 61st Street Park.
Residents are getting a little extra muscle to help their workout in the South L.A. neighborhood, and the kids are enjoying plenty of playtime as they celebrate the grand opening of this brand-new pocket park.
We'll bring my two daughters and my nephew to come and play, and I do some workout, I guess, it's good for everybody.
I love it, I adore it. Thank you for my park.
The 61st Street Park is the 12th of what will be more than 50 parks planned by the city in the most underserved of L.A.'s urban neighborhoods. This park was previously the site of a foreclosed and abandoned house.
What I love most about this program is to take a blighted, bad situation and make it better for the children and their family.
We're putting 53 new parks throughout Los Angeles in the places in Los Angeles that want them and need them the most, so that we'll no longer be park poor in any way.
The pocket parks are built to keep maintenance low. They have safety gates which close and lock at night, solar lighting, sustainable turf, plants, and landscaping, and other earth-friendly features.
We have a play tower for the kids, and it's a universal-access play tower, so it doesn't matter what your physical ability is, everyone can play on it.
LAPD officers from the Newton Division will be doing regular patrols of the area, but neighbors say they will keep an eye out as well to make sure their park stays safe for the neighborhood and the kids. I'm Ana Marcos for L.A. this week.
The park was built with both federal and local funding dollars through public and private partnerships. In this week's List of Things to Do, a family-friendly festival, a Stanley Kubrick exhibit at the Central Library, and a showstopping season finale for the Los Angeles Master Corral. If you and your family are looking for some outdoor fun, head on over to the Second Annual East L.A. Community Festival on Saturday, June 1st, from noon to 6:00 P.M. Hosted by the Neighborhood Music School, the event is an afternoon of family activities, food and resource tables from community organizations, and face painting, a hula hoop competition, and a water balloon toss for kids. The music school is located at 358 South Boyle Avenue. Admission is free. For details, call 323-268-0762. The L.A. Central Library downtown has on display from now through Saturday, June 29th, the exhibit Stanley Kubrick: A Life in Film. The exhibit features a small collection of poster and still photography images from the director's work, which includes 13 full-length films. The exhibit invites you to pore over the books that accompany the exhibit, visit the paintings that influenced the movie sets, or read the photo diary of an actor from Full Metal Jacket. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street downtown. Go to lapl.org for details. And on Sunday, June 2nd, starting at 7:00 P.M., the Los Angeles Master Corral will present a showstopping finale on its 50th anniversary season at the Walt Disney Concert Hall. The season concludes with an all-hands-on-deck celebration of American choral music. You'll hear sentimental favorites, new standard-setting works, plus cutting-edge arrangements by three masters of the American spiritual. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. Go to lafil.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Did you know that more than 80 percent of false alarms are related to preventable user errors, such as open windows? Or pets? Any motion can trigger an alarm. Thousands of police patrol hours are wasted investigating alarm reports that turn out to be false alarms. That's crime-fighting time lost. Make sure your alarm is working properly.
Hi, this is Caratello Family.
We are from Inza Stranglers Royal Heights.
You're watching Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel! You're watching Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel!
I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 29th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. We do not have a quorum. We do have a quorum. All right, so we're ready to go. So with that said, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Hello, combusciano, Englander, Garcia, Wezar, Coretts, Koryan, La Bancha, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosen, Valzine, Weston, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Parks and Perry. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Koryan and Englander. Next.
Mr. President, items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, members, any specials, 1 through 9? We have no cards. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances, unless reconsidered later, for 12 members, will be carried over one week.
I got it. Okay.
Items 10 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, members, we really have to do the best, a better job in hearing these items in committee. Now watch, Mr. Clerk, all of them are mine. So anyway, with that said, specials, members?
Number 10?
10 for Mr. Parks. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Oh, yeah, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next section, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Parks.
Oh, Mr. Parks?
Fourth with on 13.
Fourth with on item 13 for Mr. Parks.
Very good, sir.
Next?
Item 15 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, see, this is a perfect example. So without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on item 16, 20, 27, and 34.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, specials? Mr. Parks?
Number 35. And on, let me ask one question. On number 21, that's an ordinance. Do we have enough to get that approved today?
Maybe later. Maybe later, but it, and it's really going to be close. Where was I, Mr. Clerk?
Specials, sir.
Specials, members? Okay, you indicated what items have been held. Mr. Coretz?
I have to admit, I wasn't paying incredible attention. Have you already passed number 11, or not gotten to it yet?
Mr. Coretz, that's the story of my life, and so I can relate. And yes, we have already passed item 11.
If I could ask that we make, hold item 11 as special, that would be great.
If you could do what?
Call item 11 as special and reconsider to do that.
We'd have to reconsider the item. And I, wasn't it sent forth with, or no? Okay, so we'll, on item 11, we will vote on reconsideration, and then we'll hold it.
Okay.
So this vote is on reconsideration? Can we open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, we're still considering items 15 through 35. And for clarification on item 22...
Do we have cards on those items?
Sir, we have cards on 16, 20, 27, and 34. 35 was called special for Mr. Parks. And again, for clarification on item 22, the agenda description should read, "To add a new Chapter 23 to Division 4 of the Los Angeles Administrative Code containing excess benefit plans for the fire and police pension plan."
Okay, so let's hold the items that were requested to be held.
I'm sorry, sir, if I may. Items 22 and 23 are the pension ordinances. They need to be voted on separately, so perhaps we could, could hold those as well.
Suppose I didn't want to? They could be bundled. Okay, then let's prepare to vote on those items. Have you two settled your dispute? You were good? Okay, so now let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Koryan, I may have to call you in as a mediator between the Clerk and the city attorney. Okay, Mr. Clerk, what else do we have?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 36 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Anybody want, want to call 36 special? Mr. Englander?
36 special.
On 36. Okay, now let's move to what I believe is the last section?
Yes, sir. Items 37 and 38 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
We have cards on item 37, sir.
Okay, on item 38, members, any specials? You want 38? Okay, 38 we need to hold, so let's hold that. Okay, so we have nothing to vote on.
Well, his plan may follow that suit, but Katie wants him to get a Mini Cooper and go traveling, convertible, and go traveling. But we've got some representatives here from the City Attorney's Office. Bill, why don't you come up? Cory, why don't you guys come up? Representatives from the administrative section, and then we will hear from Richard, who's going to enjoy retirement. Bill Carter?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Most of you don't see the trial lawyers until a case is going to be settled or in case we have to resolve something. I've been a trial lawyer all of my career, primarily a criminal prosecutor. However, the real people carrying the heavy loads in our office are our trial lawyers down in the police litigation unit and other liability units that have to defend the city every day. Every day for the things that we do as a city. We have to operate as a city. We have to have a fire department. We have to have a police department. We have to have a sanitation department. We have to have all those things. A wreck and park department. All those things that we provide to the citizens of the city. And we do most everything right, but there are some times we do things that cause liability. And we have to look to people like Richard to defend the city, because in a civilized society, we need to provide for our citizens, whether it be health care, whether it be parks, whether it be libraries. We have to do that as a society. And when we do that, we take risks. And when we take risk, we incur liability. And when we incur liability, we need people like Richard to defend us. And that's what he does every day. And sometimes these are cases that are horrendous cases. And Richard and his folks come up to us, and they tell us about these cases. He had one in front of Judge Schneider recently where unfortunately, a young woman who was about five foot tall was shot three times by LAPD and then was tased while she was on the ground. I know LAPD argued, and we found that they were in policy. However, the juries thought otherwise. The jury felt LAPD did not act in policy, and we have liability. But we have to defend that every day. And people like Richard have great courage to go in front of the jury and the judges and to argue on all of your behalf. And sometimes we prevail, and sometimes we don't. And when we don't prevail, that's money that comes out of the pocket of all the citizens of the city, and that's fewer books, that's fewer parks, that's fewer other things. So hopefully, when we do good things, Richard will be recognized, and all the other people in the section will be recognized for the great work they do. And when we don't prevail, hopefully, that'll be a lesson that'll be learned by all of us to say, "How can we do better risk management?" And that's the other lesson that we can learn from Richard, because he'll come back and say, "Well, officer so-and-so, we've got to do a little differently next time." And thankfully, we win more than we don't. And I want to thank Richard and all the great work you've done, and I, and I just, it, it's sad to see Richard go, but there are a lot of other Richards leaving too. We've got a lot of building left to be done in the office. I, hopefully, in the future, will be able to replace people like Richard. It'll be very hard, but we'll have to do that. And thank you again, Richard, for all the great work.
Cory Brent.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Zine, for agreeing to sponsor this for Richard. As Bill said, Richard, we're losing a real good one, you know? People who don't work for the city sometimes say things about city employees. They're lazy, they don't come to work, they don't work hard. The folks in POU and particularly Rich, exactly the opposite. I mean, hard worker. We've been on furloughs. It didn't faze him a bit. He came to work every day. He worked nights, he worked weekends. We tried cases in San Bernardino, in Riverside, and Santa Ana. Rich went to every one of those. He fought every single one tooth and nail, never wanted to settle a case, always believed in his clients, was a great team member, helped anybody that needed help, never said no to anybody, was always in a good mood, always had a smile on his face, always glad to work here, always glad to be representing the LAPD. He represents the best that we have, and it's a big loss for all of us. You see this turnout here, which is LA City Attorney and LAPD. You see how many people love Rich and appreciate everything he's done. And to his family, let me just say, "Thank you so much for loaning us Rich, and we're sorry for all the time we took away from you for him to be with us." But every LAPD officer he ever represented is so grateful that they had Rich, and we thank you so much for loaning him to us, and we're gonna be sorry to lose him, but we're glad you guys are getting him back, and we wish him all the best.
I know it's a bit unusual, but the lady that stood beside for all these years, Katie, comments from you?
No.
Yes, come on. Come on. You put up with it. You put up with it all these years. Are those the children? Come on up. You have four children? Come on up.
No, two girls.
Two girls?
We have been very honored to have Rich serve as a city attorney. He has worked very hard. We're very, very proud of him. But it's good that he's retiring, because now we can have some fun.
Yes, we do.
You want to say anything?
I just want to say that I'm really proud, and I am anxious to see what my dad is going to look like in a Mini Cooper with his lap. And being the oldest daughter, I know that my father, in all of his years of being a practicing attorney, and he was a perfect example of what hard work is. So I'm just really proud of him and that he could be honored in such a setting. Thank you.
I am truly honored and humbled by this, and I thank you, each and every one of you, and especially, I thank my wife and two of our four wonderful children. The other two boys are down in San Diego, and they're working, so they couldn't get up here, but I'm really tickled pink about Katie and Lisa and Teresa making it, and good friend Val.
And Gabriel.
Oh, my goodness, Gabriel, where are you? Oh, our newest son, part of our family, Gabriel also, who married our daughter Lisa, and all of the people behind me. Ladies and gentlemen, I was in, as Dennis said, I was in private practice for 27 years. God was exceedingly good and gracious to Katie and I and blessed us, and on our 54th birthday, we retired, and our retirement nut was secure, so I was looking around for service. And serendipitously, bad word, coincidentally at that time, there was the Rampart scandal. And because of that, the city attorney was looking for some good men and women to help them out, and I was so fortunate to be one of those few that were chosen to help the police unit defend the city of Los Angeles at that time. And I've been doing it for the last 13 and a half years, and I have loved every, every minute of it. There's just one other thing that I wanted to say. I feel compelled to say it. When I came here from private practice, I came with a little bit of baggage being hubris and attitude, and I was going to show them what was going on. By the quality of the work, in addition to the time and amount of work that the attorneys and support staff and the police litigation unit were putting in, that attitude was quickly knocked out of me, and I became very much grateful and aware of what a special unit the police litigation unit is. And I just wanted to tell you that your police litigation unit of the City Attorney's Office is a very precious resource that you have, and you should be aware of them, because they are yours, and they do good work. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much, and my fellow attorneys and support staff. God bless you guys. I love you very, very much.
Mr. Zine, we have one more member on the queue. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. It's inspiring to see the level of loyalty that has been demonstrated this morning. Mr. Reyes, thank you and your family for sharing such a wonderful moment with us. The litigation unit is but one unit. There are so many other units in the City Attorney's Office. And in my 24 years as a civil servant, and my 12 as a council member, I've been humbled to work with the unit that works on land use issues, on planning issues. But I just imagine that the levels of sacrifice that have been made evident by the product of your work says it all. And for that, I just want to rise and say thank you. Thank you as an individual, thank you as an inspiration to the unit, but more importantly, for sharing those thoughts with this body. We know we have to make hard decisions during budget, the crisis that we're in. We're not out of it yet, but it's crucial to understand, setting politics aside, that there are real men and women who are sacrificing family time, weekends, to do what they do for our great city. I just want to say thank you to them, and use this as an opportunity to thank you, but also to make sure it reveres throughout your whole department. Thank you so much.
Mr. Zine, back to you.
Thank you. Let's go back in the, back for photos, back in the photos.
Boy, Zine, you really know how to clean out a room.
I think usually he does that when he comes in.
Yes, generally. The floor is yours, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could ask the members of the Housing Department that I'm here to honor today to come up and join me, please, behind me. I wanted to tell a story about something that happened in my district that's kind of representative of the extraordinary work that, that so many of our public employees put in every day. My office found out about an apartment building whose owner had passed away. And after this owner of the building passed away, things kind of fell into disarray as to who was supposed to take over responsibility for the bills and so on in this building. And as a result, the water bill went unpaid. And because that water bill was unpaid, the tenants of this entire apartment building went without water for a week before we found out about it. An entire apartment building without any drinking water or ability to bathe for a week. And so when we found out about it, we immediately called the Housing Department, we immediately called the DWP, and working together, these two departments were absolutely incredible in cutting through all the bureaucratic red tape, cutting through the usual procedures, and finding a solution. So this building was placed in the REAP program. We were able to establish a new utility billing account, and the tenants were, the tenants' rents went into that account. We were able to get water up and running, and a problem was solved. A potentially, you know, significant problem, a threat to public health, a threat to the health of the tenants, was solved promptly through the REAP program. And it was just an example, I think, of how much REAP and also the SKEP program provide to the people of this city. The contribution that these two programs make to livability for renters throughout this city is really beyond measure. In fact, it's so successful that, as you've heard many times, even some of our gadflies come up and compliment the REAP program, and that's saying a lot, really. So I think it's a great example of what our public employees do in making life better here in the city of Los Angeles. And so I want to take a moment to recognize those men and women who make SKEP and REAP possible and contribute so much to our city. And to speak more about those programs, I want to bring up the general manager of the Housing Department, Mercedes Marquez. Mercedes?
Good morning. We are so very proud to be with you today, and I'm so very proud of the LHD family. Councilman, thank you so much for the recognition. The SKEP program, our systematic code enforcement program, in 2005 received the Innovation in American Government Award from the Kennedy School at Harvard. That means that it is the best housing program in the country. And indeed, our code enforcement program continues to set the mark for the nation. Just since 2005, we have received visits from Orlando, New Orleans, New York City, Chicago, Dallas, San Antonio, Phoenix, San Diego, San Francisco, Wichita Falls, Kansas, Houston, Texas, Tempe, Arizona, Ventura, and Sacramento, California, in addition to Vancouver, Canada, all to understand the excellence. Our jurisdiction is 760,000 multifamily units in the city. We inspect them once every four years, the only city still in the country that does a physical inspection of their entire multifamily housing stock still in the country, and frankly, as a result, in the world. The REAP program and the SKEP program work together. As SKEP has now concluded its third cycle, that means that the REAP program is also more effective. As the, as units are brought up into code, we now have less than one-half percent of our 760,000 units that are ever within the REAP program. That is an enormous sign of success. We have only a 6% recidivism rate. So that means that once, because SKEP works, you spend less and less time in REAP. In the end, I'd say the most... in cutting through all the bureaucratic red tape, cutting through the usual procedures and finding a solution. So this building was placed in the REAP program. We were able to establish a new utility billing account and the tenants were, the tenants' rents went into that account. We were able to get water up and running and a problem was solved. A potentially, you know, significant problem, a threat to public health, a threat to the health of the tenants, was solved promptly through the REAP program. And it was just an example, I think, of how much REAP and also the SKEP program provide to the people of this city. The contribution that these two programs make to livability for renters throughout this city is really beyond measure. In fact, it's so successful that, as you've heard many times, even some of our gadflies come up and compliment the REAP program and that's saying a lot, really. So I think it's a great example of what our public employees do in making life better here in the city of Los Angeles. And so I want to take a moment to recognize those men and women who make SKEP and REAP possible and contribute so much to our city. And to speak more about those programs, I want to bring up the general manager of the Housing Department, Mercedes Marquez. Mercedes?
We are so very proud to be with you today and I'm so very proud of the LAHD family. Councilman, thank you so much for the recognition. The SKEP program, our systematic code enforcement program, in 2005 received the Innovation in American Government Award from the Kennedy School at Harvard. That means that it is the best housing program in the country. And indeed, our code enforcement program continues to set the mark for the nation. Just since 2005, we have received visits from Orlando, New Orleans, New York City, Chicago, Dallas, San Antonio, Phoenix, San Diego, San Francisco, Wichita Falls, Kansas, Houston, Texas, Tempe, Arizona, Ventura and Sacramento, California, in addition to Vancouver, Canada, all to understand the excellence. Our jurisdiction is 760,000 multifamily units in the city. We inspect them once every four years, the only city still in the country that does a physical inspection of their entire multifamily housing stock still in the country and frankly, as a result, in the world. The REAP program and the SKEP program work together. As SKEP has now concluded its third cycle, that means that the REAP program is also more effective. As the, as units are brought up into code, we now have less than one half percent of our 760,000 units that are ever within the REAP program. That is an enormous sign of success. We have only a 6% recidivism rate. So that means that once, because SKEP works, you spend less and less time in REAP. In the end, I'd say the most important thing is that as these things begin as enforcement, because they work together, it ends up adding up to a preservation program. And when you are able to talk about preservation of housing and quality of life, you have surpassed your mandate just to do enforcement because you're now doing a positive and the level of investment that we get from that is immeasurable because that means the city is never putting any city dollars into it. So we thank you so very much for the recognition and my absolute congratulations to SKEP and to REAP and to the individual that you're going to recognize. So here we have the Assistant General Manager, Roberto Aldape, is here. I want to recognize him. Roy Babzera is the Director of REAP. Domingo Saucedez here as the Director of Code. Many of the chiefs and leadership are here, but we want you to know, this is an absolute family. This team will do whatever it takes on behalf of the residents of LA to get the job done. Incredibly generous people. So my congratulations.
Thank you, Mercedes. I hesitate to single anybody out because so many of the, because all of the men and women of this department contribute so much. But there's another story that I wanted to tell about one employee that I think is representative of the kind of commitment and passion for service that the Housing Department employees and all of our public employees exhibit every day. I want to tell you about Masis Andriassian, who has worked for the city of Los Angeles for seven years as an inspector in the Housing Department. For the last three years, Masis has worked in the Code Enforcement Division's Specialized Enforcement Unit where he conducts inspections and issues citations related primarily to zoning violations. During his time as an inspector, Masis has proven to be invaluable for the Housing Department and especially for the SEU. He displays a passion for his work and follows through on all of his cases to ensure compliance or prosecution. Interestingly, Masis served on, in special combat duty during the Iraq War from 1981 to 1983 and he's a post-trained peace officer. And those experiences came into play one day in my district when Masis was going about his ordinary work and witnessed a homicide occurring as he was participating in a follow-up inspection for LAHD. Now, the perpetrator of the homicide then turned his weapon on Masis and opened fire. And so despite being shot at in the course of his work, Masis Andriassian was not, did not have his judgment clouded. He went about his work, he called the LAPD, he reported the crime and as a result of his quick thinking and his vigilance and his persistence to see the job done, the LAPD was notified and arrived quickly and made sure that no one else was put in harm's way. That was perhaps an extraordinary day, but Masis works tirelessly every day to provide the residents of the city of Los Angeles with incredible service, even in times of danger and he and the other representatives of the Housing Department bravely go about their responsibility to make each of us safer and to make the city of Los Angeles a better place each, a better place each and every day. So I want to just recognize Masis Andriassian with this certificate of this resolution on behalf of all of the people of the city of Los Angeles. And to all of the men and women of the Los Angeles Housing Department, Mercedes, if you can accept this on their behalf.
Thank you, sir.
With the thanks of a grateful city.
Before you leave, council member, Housing Department, just want to take a moment and say thank you to the Housing Department for all its years of struggle. When we look at the depth of our poverty areas and what you have done to alleviate that pressure, it's been amazing. But to also now take it to another level and strategically place resources around rail stations, looking at transit corridors and leveraging what we do have to exercise strategies that does make a difference, is a very complicated task. And to see it actually come to fruition in very key areas, areas that we measure up with our transportation policies, it truly is a multiplier effect that will be profound for our city for many years. So on behalf of all the children and the families, the childcare centers, the services that go with your housing, I congratulate you for your noble work. Thank you so much.
So my understanding, Mr. Clerk, that Councilman Parks wanted to address item 35?
Well, thank you very much. I'd ask the family of Rigoberto Dupree to come up and that's Jose Luis, Karina Coronado and Rigoberto Dupree, if you come up to the mic. Colleagues, we have a reward motion for $50,000 on an incident that occurred on April 22, 2013 at 5:15 PM. Rigoberto Dupree was shot multiple times in the area of 2120 West Florence Avenue. Tragically, he was found deceased by the Los Angeles Fire Department personnel upon their arrival. To date, there's been no identifying information and detectives from LAPD has asked for this reward motion and that's Detective Dean Velouin and also Lolita Devila of the Criminal Gang Homicide Division at 2134851383 are asking for assistance. We'd ask Mr. Dupree to make comments for the family.
Good morning. My name is Rigoberto Dupree. It's my brother Jose Luis Dupree. We're the two only sons of my father, rest in peace now. It's my wife, Karina Coronado. We would really appreciate the help for the people to help the LAPD department to help us find the person that took my father's life away for no reason, for no motive. My dad was a hardworking man, very humble. He started working in that area since 1985. Always had the doors open for anybody, helped out anybody that he needed help, worked Monday through Sunday. Hard to believe, but he didn't have time for, basically not even to have fun with us or to, you know, spend time with us. He was, his dedication was just, you know, his work, work and unfortunately, you know, it's unfair that a person that, you know, that nice, that good, could be murdered that way, you know, for no reason, for no motive. It's very unfair and it's very unfortunate that, you know, he had to be murdered like that, you know. We really, really, really need this help. Anybody can come forward and help us find, excuse me, find the person that did this to him because everybody knew him there, in that area. Everybody knew who was Rico, who was Regal. And it's very sad, I mean, that this person did not touch his heart to, to murder him like he did for no, for no reason, for no motive. We don't have no leads, we don't have no, no answers. We ask ourselves why or, you know, what was the motive or what was the reason that this guy did this to my father and, you know, we really need your help, real, from the bottom of our hearts, to help us find the person that did this to him because he doesn't know the magnitude of pain that my mother is going through, that we're going through. You know, it's, I still can't believe that he's not with us anymore. It's hard to believe and we really pray to God that he guides the detective that are working real hard in this case to find the person that took my dad's life away for no reason, for no motive. So we really appreciate your help if you guys can help us out in finding the person that did this to my father. Thank you.
Very much. And again, for the public, this incident occurred on April 22, 2013 at approximately 5:15 in the evening. The victim was Rigoberto Dupree, male, Hispanic, 54 years of age, shot multiple times in the rear of 2120 West Florence Avenue. Detectives can be reached at, from the Criminal Gang Homicide Division at 2134851383 and we ask for an eye vote on the $50,000 reward.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to say that we are listening and that your courage is noted in being able to say what you've needed to say. I'm hoping that someone out there truly is listening because it's very evident the pain you're going through and it does take a lot of courage to come here and make this statement, so thank you for that.
Okay, with that said, members, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, on, I think I want to go to item 37. I have two cards on this item. Dr. Perry Crouch, who I saw earlier today, come forward and Mr. Arnold Sacks. That's Mr. Buscayino's guy.
Yes, yes.
Welcome.
Good morning, friends. I'm happy twice. We got it done, sir. That's our mayor. Thanks to all of you, but I'm here because we really need this million plus for Nicholson, Jordan and Imperial Courts. And the reason for this is we haven't had a homicide in those developments in two years. The last one was in 2011. But because of all of y'all uniting with us and working with us, we've been able to keep the youngsters at bay because we provide the services in those developments. When you don't have a service in those developments, then we go back to '05 and '06 when we had 17 shootings and seven homicides, which made us form what's, what's known as one of the only ones in the nation, the Watch Gang Task Force. And since then, we have, we put a dent in violent crimes and all that other stuff, but working together. So we really asking y'all to answer the bell and really grant this because the side effects of this is when they start huddling up, then we have to have fire extinguishers putting out them unnecessary fires. And I'm getting up in age and I'm tired of doing that, but I want to make sure that we have programs available through Wrenck and Parks to, to continue to save lives. So I'm asking all my friends to answer the bell and grant us this request so that we can continue to make the 15th district a really growing and, and really work with our councilmen to make this a reality. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Another budget, another year, another budget, another successful escape by the council. Yet in none of this budgetary discussion was any of the unaccounted revenues discussed. Pipeline oil revenue, bus bench revenue, bus bench advertising revenue, AB 1290 revenue. You know, I believe last year, the controller, Wendy Gruel, did an audit and mentioned something to the effect of $44 million in the AB 1290 funds, some kind of discrepancy. So when you look at these sources of revenue, you can use 44 million, use 40, use $35 million as a benchmark for the amount of money that comes into the council district offices, but doesn't get included in the budget that the mayor puts out. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alakon.
Council members, I just wanted to stand to thank our President Herb Weston for working with the council members who are affected by severe cuts to these programs and saving these programs. For my part, I especially want to thank him for helping us keep the year-round pools open in the city of Los Angeles. This is a valuable service and clearly the funding to the parks that were mentioned by the previous speaker will help keep our crime situation in control. So thank you very much. This is a good expenditure and I also want to say thank you to the Budget Chair for working with us on this as well. Mr. Krikorian, thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to ask Mr. Alakon a question. Recently, you had a motion that moved the pilot money into programming. Does this add to that or does that supplant it or? Because I think we approved a motion about a week ago that was like $900,000 or something for programming within the housing development.
This is in addition.
So the 900 is on top of this?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the pilot money.
What's that?
It has nothing to do with the pilot money.
No, no, I'm just saying.
It's in addition.
This is in addition to the pilot money?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian, there are no speakers on the queue, so let's move forward with, okay, technical collection by, I mean correction by our clerk.
And for the record, under item five, general city purposes, the first line added should read, "Cultural art and city events and related activities such as student transportation."
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, what I want to do now is take up all of the ordinances except for item 20 because we have cards on item 20. We'll hold that aside, vote on all the other ordinances and then we'll address item 20.
Mr. President, those would be items one, two, 17, 18, 19 and 21.
Okay, so this first vote is for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
This next vote will be on the actual items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Parks.
City Attorney, a question on 21. When could we expect that ordinance to be active? Because the, Dunn is looking to implement that program in July.
Generally, ordinances become effective approximately 42 to 43 days after the mayor signs.
Okay, so we could go forthwith on 21 so we can get, give them that tool?
Forthwith on item 21. Okay, now we will, we have before us item 20, called special by Arnold Sacks and Mickey Jackson, I believe it is.
I withdraw. I withdraw.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, withdraws the card. Arnold Sacks, if you please come forward on item number 20.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This is an editorial from the Daily Breeze from April 4, 2013. Porn condom laws impact is being seen. Porn shoots, no pun intended, are moving to Ventura County. So business is moving outside of LA County. And last time I checked, I believe the people that are involved, the actors and the actresses, are actually subcontractors in and of themselves. They're not employed by the companies that make the porn movies. They actually have the opportunity to say, no, they don't want to be involved in the movie, or yes, they do want to be involved in the movie. This nanny state that you've become is over the top. I liked it better when you were on Meatless Mondays.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll. Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, I want to go to item 16 at this time. Mr. Sacks, you have a card.
Yes, item 16 refers to the pension nominations to the board. And there was an interesting story in the New York Times on Saturday, May 25. It deals with the New York State Controller on behalf of the New York State Employees' Retirement System. He was talking about Exxon and its policies against gays. But what's more important, as far as I was concerned in this article, is the fact that the New York State retirement system has money involved with Exxon. So it's not really the price of oil that drives the cost of gasoline. It's the amount of money that pensions have involved in the companies that, like Exxon Mobile, like Valero. These companies need to make big profits to move the huge amount of monies that are involved in pensions. So when gas comes to $5, think about the pension.
Okay, thank you. And just as a quick announcement, on item 20, on item 20, members, I've been informed that there is some amendment language that's being dealt with, so at the appropriate time, we'll take that item up. We're in discussions, Dion, with the City Attorney's Office. I might have jumped a gun on that. So now let's vote on item 16. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And to our Commissioner, congratulations. General Manager, I apologize. I apologize. Arnold Sacks, item 27.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. There was an article in today's newspaper, or actually yesterday's newspaper, regarding Argentina and the request by Wall Street agencies buying up old debt to pursue payment. And so you say, well, what's this have to do with MICLA? Well, MICLA is a city corporation that issues bonds without having to get the public to vote on them. So they increase debt payment, which makes them susceptible to corporations that want to buy up old debt and demand payment. And because it's the city that's involved, sometimes services have to get cut to pay off these debts. We have people who want to use money to pave the streets. They want to borrow money. We have Mr. Parks put out a motion regarding collecting some funds for measure our local return. They're all about debt payment.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Parks, item 10.
I know you just don't go.
You're okay with item 10, so let's vote on item 10. Okay, there are no cards on item 10. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go to item 34, called special by Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And the reason actually I held this item was actually before its reference to Hackla. And yesterday, I made a reference to Hackla being a nonprofit. And Mr. Alacan mentioned that it's a city agency that is, like all city agents, doesn't pay taxes. And yet here's action that the council took requesting the State Senate President Pro tempore, the Speaker of the Assembly, the U.S. Secretary for Housing and Urban Development to draft legislation to provide for direct city oversight of the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. That doesn't sound like a city agency that the council has any oversight over. And also, Ken Simmons, Director of Hackla, mentioned at the meeting of May 1, 2013, that Hackla in and of itself is a nonprofit. That's one of those pilot programs. They make payments in lieu of taxes. But why they make payments in lieu of taxes when they're a nonprofit is somewhat an oxymoron because it's a nonprofit. Pay attention to the nonprofits that are...
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item 11, held special by Juan Acala.
Public hearing satisfied, Mr. President.
Oh, no, I'm informed, Juan, that the public hearing has been satisfied on this item, so we don't have to take public comment. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out to the council that the critical nature of this particular issue, AB 711, on lead ammunition. We know why ammunition is dangerous to humans and animals made with lead, and lead products are illegal in most other circumstances. It's illegal to shoot ducks and other waterfowl, but it's still allowed to use lead ammunition to hunt bigger game. The dangers are that it fragments in the body of the animal, and then humans may take it home and dress it and eat it and be exposed to lead. And a number of endangered animals and species like the California condor and the bald eagle are eating these carcasses and dying from lead poisoning. So we're asking that we support this legislation, which would ban lead from all ammunition. Banning lead from shooting waterfowl hasn't affected hunting of waterfowl in any negative way. We believe this will allow us to keep some very significant endangered species in particular from being eliminated. So I ask for your I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we want to take up item 36. I have Cards, Ann Williams, Jessica Dubuff, Doug Arsenault, Sandy Sanchez. So you guys need to start lining up.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, motion 36A has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. As you know, CCA has been very engaged with the city on the issue of realignment because it has such a direct impact on development and development reform. Last month, we appreciated Plum's incorporation of CCA's four primary concerns into the implementation plan. Specifically, CCA asked the city to identify key process changes supported by metrics and timelines, streamline case processing, provide a proposed organizational chart, and finally, to maintain the commitment to long-term planning efforts. We understand that the merger has raised some personnel issues, and we are encouraged to hear that the city has decided to be a bit more deliberate and work through these issues while still aiming for a January 1, 2014 launch date for the new department. We look forward to continuing to work closely with the consultant and the departments to help shape the creation of the new department. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sanchez? Or, wait, who are you? Jessica, Jessica. How could I forget that name? My daughter-in-law's name is Jessica.
That's right.
So I'm sorry for bumping you back in the line.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Dubuff. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber supports increasing efficiency, accountability, and certainty in the city's development process through the proposal of this new Department of City Planning and Development. Following passage of this plan, the real work will begin to collaborate with stakeholders to implement the new department. The chamber and the business community look forward to being strong partners in that process. We appreciate the steps taken to have the new department incorporate the following recommendations: a prioritization of case processing and sufficient staffing to meet timelines, an organizational chart that reflects a merger of the cultures of distinct departments, identification of key process changes to produce performance improvements and elimination of redundancies, and a development of metrics to measure improvements and issues, and a continued commitment to long-term planning efforts, especially the completion of a comprehensive zoning code update. We look forward to working with you on the new department's structure, functions, and implementation to stimulate economic growth in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Good to see you come on forward.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Doug Arsenault of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. VICA supports in concept the city department reorganization plan to streamline the development process. We have long advocated for the integration of the duplicative processes of the Department of City Planning and Building and Safety, as well as the development functions of DOT, Fire and Public Works. We recognize the reorganization process is only in its initial stages. As this process moves forward, we look forward to the inclusion of VICA and its strategic partners in the design of the Department of Planning and Development's organizational structure. We ask that the implementation focus on the principles of accountability, better management of staff, and proper organizational authority structures. As our members must interact with city staff on a daily basis, we want to ensure that this process truly accomplishes its goal of simplifying the process. Too often, our members are faced with unnecessary obstacles due to inefficiencies and lack of consistent procedures between staff members, particularly in regards to discretionary development approval and inspection. The current mix of good staff and bad staff is not acceptable. This reorganization must pull from the best of these departments. By working hand-in-hand with the business community, we hope the city can ensure more consistent development review, permit approval, and code implementation processes. VICA looks forward to this process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, followed by, I think it's Nicole Shanahan.
Good morning. Sandy Sanchez with the Building Industry Association of Southern California, Los Angeles, Ventura County's chapters. I represent over 1,000 members, and our group is very excited to see this action continue to move forward, and we'd like it to move forward as swiftly as possible. We've worked closely with various staff members, general managers from all the departments, and we'd like to continue that so that we come up with a plan that really works. I think our previous speakers really talked on the points that we're really looking forward to ensure happen, and we can't express enough how important it is to eliminate duplicative processes and duplicative reviews and multiple systems that keep us from really moving business forward and improving the business environment. So we look forward to seeing this truly get off the ground, hiring a consultant, and continuing to work with all the general managers as a team to make this move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And if we could have Ms. Nicole...
Shanahan.
I got you. Followed by Juan Acala.
Good morning. On behalf of the Hollywood Chamber, I'm here to express our support of the creation of the Department of City Planning and Development. A creative and business-friendly initiative like this is precisely what the City of LA needs to drive economic growth in our city. The Hollywood Chamber has helped to build one of the strongest business communities in Los Angeles, and we view this streamlined department as a great tool for continued efforts to bring new business and new jobs to the city. Reenlightenment of the city's planning and development services, as proposed, will send a strong message to the broader business community that the city is taking steps to become more welcoming to business and desires to support new and growing businesses as well. The proposed department is a step in the right direction for LA. We look forward to working with you to shape this new department and hope that you call on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Acala. Juan Acala. Okay, he is no longer in the room. Let's prepare to... Oh, no. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. This vote is historic, actually, and in the works for a long time. The city has attempted so many times to do so many different things to fix the process and the bureaucracy, and we're about to vote to do that. I started working on this 13 years ago, actually, before I was even a Chief of Staff for Greg Smith, when I worked outside the building and working with various leaders throughout the San Fernando Valley, where we had a vision at that time to have one city, one department for processing, for planning, to streamline the process. I don't think it's ironic today, in the Daily News, their story today in the Daily News that says LA is the least friendly city in business. It's LA is the least friendly city for business. Story after story in the LA Times, in the Daily News, in the Wall Street Journal, LA is the least friendly city for business. And we're about to change that today with this vote. For the third year, according to BizFeds latest report, third year in a row, they found that taxes and fees, as well as government regulations, were the top two concerns. And while we all support eliminating business tax and trying to find a way to do that, and I think there is a roadmap to get there, streamlining the bureaucracy and getting rid of all of these departments to work under one department is finally before us. In some cases, it says, "The project may receive formal approvals from several government departments, but then be led by another department, which they don't manage, and therefore they need to harmonize this process." The survey found that 60% of respondents said the City of Los Angeles as a region is the least business-friendly city. And by contrast, El Segundo, Long Beach, Burbank, and Glendale were named among the most business-friendly. Now, what's fascinating is El Segundo, Long Beach, and Burbank and Glendale all consolidated their departments. Every one of those cities consolidated their Building and Safety Department and their Planning Department. The joint report that came out by both Building and Safety and Planning on April 5 has a lot of great information in here. And it says, "The land development is a complicated and time-consuming process. The process is exacerbated by multiple levels of zoning requirements prompted by the unique set of challenges that face each of the 66 communities within the city. The overabundance of information regulations, interpretations can be intimidating and discouraging for anyone who wants to build in Los Angeles. Multiple clearances from up to 23 departments amplifies the confusion, but also lengthens the permitting process and timeline. A change in the city's culture from an individualistic, process-possessive department to a customer-driven, comprehensive citywide development process is necessary in order to provide project-oriented approaches." This is exactly what we visioned, and so why now? It's a pivotal time in the city where policy changes, zoning practices, technology enhancements, organizational structures can finally be streamlined. So I want to thank everybody who's worked on this, the departments, Mr. Kocorian for seconding the motion a year ago as well that started this process. The idea that we've already supported this in the budget, it's actually become now part of the budget, so I'd like to thank the mayor for including this in his budget as well. And the motion with the technical amendment I ask for your I vote on, which will hire a consultant to begin working with the CLA and the CAO for an implementation plan, which will be transparent, working with all the stakeholders, VICA, business leaders, CCA, the various employees of all the departments, developers, and the like. And with that, come up with a comprehensive plan, including all the departments and the general managers, for that implementation to take effect January 1 as a start date. That's what we did in the budget, and that's what the instructions are set before us, and I ask for your I vote for this historic vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Mr. Englander for his stewardship in this process. As a member of the Plum Committee, we've been watching, for my past 12 years, been watching how we are folding now technology. We're looking at streamlining. But I also want to give the departments a thank you for their support, knowing that almost 40% of these departments have been cut, that we are now in a phase where we need to be opportunistic with the changing economy, and as we go forward, be able to embrace these opportunities. But also looking at how we can make the city as a whole more accountable and changing the image... image of not being business-friendly. And if we look at all the requests for proposals we've put forth in the past two to three years in which we've asked for the experts to come and tell us how we can look at projects, development, move forward in a way in which everyone knows where that project is sitting, whether it's in Bureau of Engineering, Transportation, Planning, Building and Safety, we all know where that project is sitting, why it's sitting there, and for how long. And these are the notions of accountability that'll help not only predictability but also confidence. So I'm glad we can do this. The first, I believe, report will occur in my committee before I leave, and then it will follow up with other steps with the new class of council that will be coming in on July 1st. So I'm glad there's a strong base here who understands the past, has institutional memory within the council, but also to look forward and incorporate technology so that we can have that level of transparency for our community stakeholders, for our businesses, and for the policymakers. Thank you.
All right, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Kocorian.
Item 38, Mr. President.
Item 38, yes.
All right. Members, you have before you now substitute budget resolution on item number 38. This substitute resolution is consistent with the Budget and Finance Report as amended that we approved last week, together with the impact of Budget Motion Number 16, which was approved by the council as item number 37 today. So the net result of all of that is contained within substitute resolution number 38 that's before you. We discussed this at great length over the course of our committee hearings in council last week, but I do just want to reiterate that this budget contains a reserve fund of $260 million, over 5.25% of the general fund, the largest it has been in a decade. This budget also includes a budget stabilization fund of $66.7 million, a critical step forward that's resulted from the diligence of this council in trying to preserve savings that we'll be able to use to help balance the budget in future years as we continue to face a nagging structural deficit problem over the next few years. This budget contains funding for 800 miles of pavement preservation, a 9% increase over last year, $3.5 million for tree trimming, $1 million for graffiti abatement. We're upgrading 25 fire companies from basic life support to advanced life support, and we're hiring two new classes of firefighters to begin the rebuilding process of the Los Angeles Fire Department. We're restoring seven-day service at the central library and eight regional libraries. We're preserving the current level of sworn staffing at LAPD, and at the same time, buying back $15 million in banked overtime to try to address that ongoing cost concern that we have. This budget provides for the purchase of 294 new black-and-white vehicles to replace the aging LAPD fleet, and we provide $1.75 million for mural restoration and maintenance and implementation of the city's new mural policy. Very importantly, the budget also provides $1.1 million to restore cuts to senior meals programs that would have been cut because of loss of federal funding due to the sequester in Washington. So 100,000 senior meals are going to be provided because of this budget that would not have been provided otherwise. So it's a good budget. I thank all of you for your hard work in helping us to get to this point, and I respectfully ask for your "I" vote.
Okay. Mr. Zine.
I will second that matter.
All right, it's been seconded. Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, I do believe you have cards on this matter.
Oh, I have one card. Thank you for reminding me, Juan Akala, item 38.
Yes, it does amaze me how many millions of dollars you talk about every time. And just to balance your budget, what about the people that are homeless? How many houses can you provide with that amount of money? You guys do business in a very weird and strange way. You keep the people homeless, and you keep building this beautiful, fantastic city, which is totally unfriendly to business, and you just go on your way. Like, all those people suffering, they mean nothing to you. It's totally ridiculous, the way you do business. It's completely ridiculous, and we need to change the way we do that. We need to create a parallel system where everybody has a home and nobody can lose it for any reason.
Thank you. No more speaker cards on this item. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to...I misspoke earlier. The budget stabilization fund is $61.4 million, and because this is a substitute resolution, if I wasn't clear, I do need to make a motion, so I move for approval of the substitute resolution.
Second, or Mr. Zine seconds. Okay, let's vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
The ayes have it.
Fourth with.
Okay, fourth with. Now, what we're going to do is vote on reconsideration for item 20. Is that what you wanted to remind me of, Mr. Kretz, or did you have something else?
Actually, I wanted to ask that we vote in reconsideration of item 20, and that we ask that we return this item to council on June 11th with the amendments that are being circulated currently.
Okay, so let us first vote on reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now that item is before us. Did you want to say anything else where it relates to what the amendments do? Are we good?
And, Mr. President, for clarification, that's Mr. Kretz is referring to motion 20A. Motion Kretz, Weston, that has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration is now before them.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
You've got this look in your eye, Mr. Kocorian.
Well, I may be a little bit late now, but I'm sorry, I don't understand the import of the amendments that we're instructing the city attorney to include in this ordinance. So I'd like someone to speak to what it is that these amendments are intended to do. Because I thought the original point of this was to comport the city's ordinance to the county's ordinance, and now we're adding new terms in that I, for one, don't understand.
Okay, can I get...I know the city attorney's office has been working with the city attorney, and I believe the CAO's office as well. Mr. City Attorney.
Before there can be a discussion on it, council would first suspend the rules to reconsider it a second time and then have the discussion.
So I'd move to suspend the rules to allow further consideration.
Okay, so we'll vote on suspend the rules. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now, if I could have the...Deion?
No.
Now we vote to reconsider. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, it's now before us. If you could come to the table, CAO's office.
Hi, Robin Engel, CAO's office. The Councilmember Kocorian, what this is intended to do is to insert back some of the language from the original ordinance, slightly modified to help clarify the intent of the ordinance. So what council acted on before was to essentially shift the responsibility from the city to the county for inspection, and that is consistent with this. The second thing is that...forgive me, I lost my train of thought. So when someone...just to clarify, so when somebody wants to get a film permit, in order to get a film permit, they have to first have a health permit from the county. What the language does here is it just makes sure that on our film permit that's issued, it has the following language. That was in the original ordinance, and the city attorney's revision that they had submitted to you left out this section. And so the sponsors of this initiative, even though we're doing this in practice, wanted to make sure it was also in the ordinance that we insert this language on the permit. So it's a pretty minor technical correction to make sure that weren't...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. No...yes, Mr. Clerk?
Just for clarification, so again, this matter would be continued to June 11, and motion 20A would be adopted with those city attorney instructions, or request, rather.
So let's open the roll. Oh, Mr. Englander. You're good. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Now, Mr. Englander, are you good? Okay. All right, Mr. City Clerk, what is before us?
Mr. President, that takes council to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Thank you. Dr. Perry Crouch, Arnold Sacks, Henry Marine, and Juan Akala. When you hear me call your name, please approach the center podium. Yes, Mr. Crouch.
I just wanted to stop by, just thank all my friends for all of the support that you gave our new elected mayor, you council president, Jan Perry, Councilman Parks, our councilman Joe Bisk, and everybody that did that. It was...we was outspent, outgunned, but we had the heart and determination, and we worked together. And as Big Daddy Kane say, "We worked and we got the job done." So I'm looking forward for us all working together to keep this crime rate down, to create jobs, but there's one problem, Mr. President, and all my beautiful council members. They let these peoples out of prison in record numbers with no programs designed, so there has to be a meeting of the mind with the governor and the Attorney General, because what they did with AP 109, they never had a backup plan. They just throwing them back out in the community, and we have a 60-day window to really address these, and we don't really have the manpower to do it. And in 60 days, they go back to doing the old things and terrorizing the community. So that's something that I really want the council president and all the city councils to look at, and this is AB 109. It looks good on paper, but when they put it out here in the streets, there's no transitional housing form, there's nothing. So they throw it out here, and then a lot of times, people tripping on them with their criminal record, so they're not allowed to get a lot of employment. And then they go back to their wicked ways and terrorizing our community, and we worked too hard to get it where it is. So that's one of the major issues that's facing us, and I just wanted to thank you guys, and y'all do a good job irrespective of all of these empty wagons that make a lot of noise. Y'all do great work. I love working with y'all. Y'all always been my family and friends, and just don't listen to that nonsense, just keep doing what you're doing, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Dr. Crouch. Okay, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sacks. Again, to discuss this council and its actions on misappropriation of the measure our local return funds. You know, this is actually a copy of the sales tax measure for placement on the 2000...this is from July 24, 2008, and it mentions some of the uses in this document. It's like 60 pages long, no, about 40 pages long. And it actually mentions here a five-point plan: safer bus stops to be funded through local return; improved service for the disabled to be funded through local return; increased bus service to rail stations to be funded through local return; community-based circulators to be funded through local return. Here's a list of measure our proposed projects and programs by subregions, has no mention of a streetcar to be funded by local return. But it also mentions in here...I gotta find this crap...that local return is 15% of the funding, and...son of a...it mentions...oh, here we go. Local return: major street resurfacing, rehabilitation and reconstruction, pothole repair, left-turn signals, bikeways, pedestrian improvement, streetscave, signal synchronization, and transit. No mention of streetcars, no mention of subway stations. So this article from May 5th about a 60-year backlog on roads, Silver Lake area, maybe it could be addressed through local returns. How you ended up a special tax going to be used for a streetcar that wasn't included in the special tax?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Your time is up. Okay, Juan or Henry, whoever's closer.
You know, Mr. Reardon likes to quote Teddy Roosevelt, and one of our quotes I like best is, "The people in this country have nothing to fear from crooks who fail. We put them in jail. It is the crooks that are successful that becomes a threat to this country." And as you know, you've been real successful in sheltering the money of city and hackley employees and not accounting for it. Consequently, it's stone in black and white how Mr. Martin Ludlow and his colleagues and the colleagues of Mr. Weston and Mr. Holden been holding our money and not accounting for it. So I'm just trying to see...and all y'all was around here, and Mr. Ludlow was here, the ones that are leaving anyway.
I wasn't here, Mr. Marine.
That's what I said, the ones that are leaving. You ain't leaving yet, but on your own. But anyway, back to the point. Get the speaker back on. Thank you. We got a long history of people sheltering money and making it disappear and calling 10% shelter from the pay by the housing of the city as a discount. Oh, yeah, that's our nice discount. We just gonna give you a discount for nothing? And that's a violation of prevailing wage and trust laws. So what kind of discounts you got? And how you gonna give money to the union for the work of city and hackley employees? That's government money. Now, you don't know the difference? If you don't know the difference, you can't make a difference. So you better start learning the difference real quick. Thank you.
Okay, Juan Akala.
As Mr. Henry said, CHOS is an acronym for city and hackley employees operating stupidly, The point is, I am really surprised that none of you have actually come up with a license to be homeless. Isn't that a great idea, how you can collect money, creating an ordinance so people have to pay a tax for being homeless? Hey, isn't that a cool idea? Huh? See this backpack on my head? That's the product of homelessness. You see all those people with backpacks on their backs? You see all those old ladies with huge carts of junk? It's the product of homelessness. Why don't you tax those people so you can create more money for the city? Because the city budget needs balancing. And where does all the money go? To people like you, employees, city employees giving tickets to people out on the street for parking their cars. You know, you have a system of waste. You use the system to punish... You use the system to punish the people that pay you for everything. It is a stupid way to run business. Create a way to give housing to everyone. No more taxes.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Kala, today you look like Carmen Miranda. I just wanted to pass that on. Okay, that concludes our general public contact, comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred next.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements. Ms. Perry.
I just want to say congratulations to the Los Angeles Kings for winning the Western Conference semifinals, and they are going off to the Western Conference Finals. And so, although we don't know who they will be playing next, it will be very exciting.
Go Kings. Any other announcements? Adjourning motions, members. If everyone in council would please rise, everyone in council, you have to stand up at this portion of the program. Everyone must rise. Ms. Perry, did I see your hand go up?
Yes, yes. I would like to adjourn in memory of Joyce W. Kelly, who was the founding director of the Kaiser Permanente School of Anesthesia for Nurses in Los Angeles. She passed away on Monday, May 27th, at the age of 84, after a three-year battle with cancer. During her long career, Joyce was elected president of the California Association of Nurse Anesthetists, and served on the State Board of Medical Quality Assurance and the Accreditation Committee for the American Association of Nurse Anesthetists for schools throughout the country. In 2002, she received the American Association of Nurse Anesthetists Agatha Hodgkins Award, and in 2012 was saluted as a living legend by that organization. She was born in King Fisher, Oklahoma. She was a certified registered nurse anesthetist and had an EDD and MA degrees. She is survived by her two children, Carol and Paul, and four grandchildren.
Mr. Reyes, did I see you raise your? Okay, anything on the left side, Mr. Keretz, or on my left side?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of a man who served his nation, city, and community and family with great distinction. At 83 years of age, Alvin Tusher passed away peacefully at home in Rancho Park on May 12th, surrounded by his loving family. He was born and raised in the Bronx, a fateful Dodger fan even back then. His parents and sister came out to California and the San Fernando Valley while he was still in college, studying at NYU in the 1940s. He enlisted in the Navy at the start of the Korean War and spent four years on an aircraft carrier as the leading petty officer for a division of approximately 60 men and the gun captain of a twin 20-millimeter anti-aircraft gun. By the end of his four years at the conclusion of the war, he had received numerous awards and decorations and a special written commendation. He resumed his education at Pepperdine, received his BS in Business Administration and Finance in 1956, and worked for Shell Oil, Perfect Photo, and Planning Research, furthering his career in business while marrying and settling down in Rancho Park in 1967. He and his wife Marilyn raised their two sons in the community of Westwood Gardens. His last deployment was with M.J. Brockin's sons, a large and prominent home builder in Los Angeles. He remained with them for 23 years, retiring in 1991 as vice president and CFO. The area in which they lived began to change in the 1980s with much more intrusion of commercial development, and Al gave his full support to his wife Marilyn, a tremendous community leader who carried forth the cause of preserving and protecting their neighborhood. And he was happy to encourage her passion for championing the community, encouraged her to attend meetings, hearings, and forums, and speak her mind for both of them. He was a quiet and reserved gentleman with a wicked sense of humor among family and friends, and was a no-nonsense, strong boss when it came to business and business decisions. He was proud to be an American and to have served his country with honor. His wife, children, and extended family were his greatest joy. He was a kind friend to all the neighbors on his block, and he was a diehard Dodger fan who never failed to surprise his friends and children with knowledge of all the Dodger stats. Al will be missed by his family, friends, and community, leaves us with an enduring legacy, and he is survived by his wife Marilyn, sons John and Benjamin, grandson Alexander, and from a prior marriage, a daughter Gail, and grandchildren Amanda, Brandon, and Erica.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keretz. No more adjourning motions. Members, this meeting is adjourned.